Mrs. Dixon.
Please, please for the pledge.
Who would?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Dixon.
Wilcox, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crop.
Here.
Menzer.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, and communications reports, including quarterly department head reports. We are first going to do a presentation of our proclamation to the Resolution Center, and if they would come forward, please. Why don't you guys come in here? There we go. How's that?
Yeah, better.
I figured that would be good. No side shots.
(laughter) All right.
Okay. Whereas twenty-five years ago, in 1993, the Resolution Center was founded to provide mediation services by trained volunteers in Macomb, St. Clair, Santa Clara, Huron, Le Pierre, and Tuscula?
There you go.
Counties. And whereas the Resolution Center is dedicated to enhancing the peaceful resolution of all forms of dispute by providing and promoting the use of appropriate alternative dispute resolution and collaborative problem-solving process that emphasizes cooperation, collaboration, and communication. And whereas the Resolution Center works with schools to provide peer mediation training and dispute resolution, currently the center is partnering with six schools in Macomb County. And whereas with the main office in Mount Clemens, sixty-five active volunteers, the non-tropical organization opened more than thirty-one, or three thousand one hundred cases in 2017. Of that number, more than one thousand nine hundred disputes were facilitated at the anticipated schools. For the second consecutive year, the center has had the highest number of mediations in a given year since the organization's conception. Therefore, I, bar Dempsey, mayor of the city of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the city commission and all of our citizens, do hereby recognize the outstanding work the Resolution Center has done in our community, enjoying and celebrating their twenty-fifth anniversary here in the city of Mount Clemens, and wishing them continued success in providing facilitative mediation services to businesses and residents in Macomb and St. Clair counties in Michigan. Miss you. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor Dempsey. Yeah, we started off over on Eighteen Market Street in the Clemens Center Plaza there twenty-five years ago. We moved over to South Main Street, and city of Mount Clemens has always been very good to us. We've gotten a lot of wonderful volunteers and very good board members, and we hope to continue here in Mount Clemens for another twenty-five years. So, thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
You do a great job, and I know firsthand.
Absolutely.
So, and Diane Kish is here, and she's on the board. She's been on the board a long time, so continued success for the next twenty-five.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Are we doing quarterly reports now?
Okay.
Pardon?
Do you have anything else?
Does anybody in the board have any notes? Go right ahead.
So, we can start with Captain Hoppy from the fire panel with the quarterly report.
Good evening.
Very.
These aren't my notes, because I was the one who was supposed to be yours. Try to bear with me, and I'll try to answer all your questions. So, the first sheets you have here show our run statistics. And again, we're running quite a few medical calls with the opium epidemic that's going on in county right now. I know you're all aware of that. And we've had quite a few fires here this last, this last month, and some have been here in the cities, some have been out. We've been very fortunate, no injuries. And we have unfortunately had a couple of incidents involving our sheriff's deputies, and luckily we were there to assist them. We have two deputies that right now are off, and are going to be off for a while, so I hope you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Before I move on, does anybody have any questions about our run statistics? You have all this in front of you. If anybody has a question, I'm not going to bore you going through each thing. And I will give you the, now, these are Captain Shipman's notes, and I will add some things as we go along. Starting with January twentieth eighteen, back in January, we had numerous fire inspections, numerous re-inspections. Again, as we head on every time we come here and talk to you, there's a lot going on in town, a lot of new buildings going on, a lot of people moving in trying to renovate, and it's nice to see. Plan review is, continues to be a big thing for us. Lieutenant Jay War is taking over a lot of the plan review, and he's doing the best he can to try to keep up on it. There's plans stacked up all over, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. Let's see here. We've attended the department head meetings and come to these meetings. We submitted our quarterly report, and we had two PIA's back in January. Tour of one hundred South Main. The leadership training that the captains have been doing, that started back in January and is due to wrap up in May. We sent, it was a decision to send a couple of the lieutenants, and I think two of the captains, the other two captains went, to an incident safety officer class. There's been some, some big leaps and bounds in incident safety and firehouse safety, cancer awareness, and that's what that course was about. And from that course, we made a lot of changes in-house, things that we haven't been doing that are clearly leaders in cancer, so we're taking steps in health. Let's see here, what else did we have? Yeah, we had a couple of hydro tests back in January. All right. Let's go there. Anything, okay. Yeah, again, a lot of inspections in February. Then we had a hydro test at forty North Main. The building renovations continue to go on, and I'm not sure, I gotta look in the book, but I think I'm scheduled to be out there tomorrow for a review. They're continuing to move on. I know you talked about this in your meeting before, the county has a lot going on. Captain Shipman met with the utilities director, and with the building inspectors, and ongoing discussions on the budget. There was a PowerPoint presentation to the city manager, I believe this was, this was the union's presentation, about the change in the promotional system. We had an officer meeting, and they came over to the MML presentation that you had here. And then, let's see. We did some, some in-house training on our four gas PID. That was all in-house, on-duty training. And we got our annual SCBA testing done, and then we had on, we had a problem. We had a door installed, I don't know if everybody's wearing that. We had a door installed and replaced in the fire station, and there was a problem with the installation, and we had some ancillary water damage as a result of that. So, we had a problem with some of the floor tiles. We had to do a renovation of the dorm, and that was a big thing in February. The guys did most of the work. Everything that we could do, we did. And it came out very nice, and if I get a chance, I'll, I'll get some pictures over to the city managers, and they can forward those to you. Or you're welcome to drop by. It came out pretty good. They're pretty good, pretty good handy men. If you're looking for somebody on the side, they're pretty good painters. Let's see here. And then, in March, we has, again, with the inspections, we had St. Patty's Day. That was a big day here in town. There's a big turnout. There's a lot of people down in town. The only incident we really had on St. Patrick's Day, the police said everybody was well behaved. I can't remember them having any problems. We did have one incident at Deacon Brody's where we thought we might have had a fire in the basement, and we wound up...
Deacon Brody's?
Bass City.
Bass City.
Thank you. They're all in my head. So, so we got a call that there was smoke in the basement. We went over there, and sure enough, there was smoke in the basement. We brought in other companies. We were able to avoid having to empty the building, which they were very appreciative of. And wound up just being a cigarette outside, it filtered smoke into the building. What else do we have here? We were able to attend the ceremony for the city, which, and I spoke to Patrick at the last department head meeting. That was very nice. That was a really nice time. I was glad to be able to attend it. I thank you for being able to attend. It was a nice, it was nice to see all the old pictures, and that was pretty cool. We had trench rescue training, we had hazmat training. The boys went to Chili Cook-Off and judged for the Masons. They're invited there every year. Pat's an ongoing maintenance issue with E1. And when I came in tonight, I guess the parts are finally in, so that's going to be resolved very quickly. And then, we'll be moving on to doing just annual testing with the vehicles. The pump testing will be coming up, the ladder testing will be coming up, and we have to do annual hose testing. And that's, that's about all I have. Does anybody have any questions about anything for me?
No.
Nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we're gonna leave, because we're short tonight.
That's fine.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next, if we could get Patrick Linnaberry from the cable TV.
Thanks, the setup there. Okay, we had a couple of major accomplishments in the first quarter of this year. The first one, if you guys walked in the main hallway, you saw that new lovely TV hanging from the wall, which we finished right after the new year. Again, we got that started at the end of last year, but we finally got the installation networking completed and programming, so now that runs from seven in the morning till four-thirty in the afternoon during business hours. And it displays city information, where things are located in City Hall, different things from the different departments. So, while people are waiting in line for things to walk through City Hall, hopefully they get some information. And most of that's going to be repeated on the cable channel as well, so what you see there is also being repeated on the government channel, on the message board system. And as I was set up there, we did do a lot of work for the city celebration on March eleventh, the Emerald Theater. Interviewed several residents that have been either lifelong residents or business owners in the town for many, many years. We made three Memory Lane videos that were used during that presentation. We've also aired them on Bass City Beat, and they will be throughout the year. We're gonna be working on putting a couple more of those together, and those will also be running on the cable channel as well. And I think that's all I have for you. Oh, I'm sorry, we did have some issues with our Comcast system, but they came out last week, got all three of the channels cleaned up and balanced out, so everything on Comcast and well should be nice and clear. We shouldn't have any, any issues whatsoever to get both of them out in the last month or so. So, all of our equipment has been tweaked and given a once-over, as they say.
Thank you.
Are the videos that were played at that celebration, are they available on the YouTube channel?
Yes, they are. So, if you search Bass City Beat plus Memory Lane, they should pop right up.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we get Sarah Price from Human Resources.
Right, the city of Mount Clemens ended the first quarter with seventy-one total employees, sixty-two full-time and nine part-time. We successfully onboarded two new part-time employees and reclassified one other individual. In addition, the city, or the Human Resources Office processed six bi-weekly payrolls, three retiree payrolls, and a miscellaneous payroll. We prepared and processed approximately a hundred W-2's and two hundred ten ninety-nine Rs. and submitted the respective files to the state and federal agencies. We've worked with our benefit advisors regarding the preparation of the year-end ten ninety-five forms. In conjunction with Mount Clemens Civil Service Commission, we are currently in the process of establishing our eligibility lists for firefighter, fire lieutenant, and fire captain. Candidates who are interested in the firefighter eligibility list should register with EMCO Incorporated at www.empco.net and select Mount Clemens as a community they are interested in. The deadline for this opportunity is April twenty-seventh. We are currently accepting applications for our seasonal laborers. These individuals must be eighteen years of old prior to starting, and they work in our Utilities and Public Services Department during the summer months. If you are interested in this position or any positions the city may have available, please visit our website, www.cityofmountclemens.com, and click on the link for job opportunities. We've also assisted the city manager's office with the preparation of the PowerPoint and printed materials for the bicentennial ceremony that was in March. Both the HR assistant and myself attended payroll training provided by the Michigan Chamber of Commerce. And we've also responded to a variety of employment verifications and surveys and just general questions. The Clement Titans newsletter was created and distributed to all Mount Clemens residents, and also look in the coming weeks for a special bicentennial newsletter that'll outline all of the items that are going on with that. And with any addition of the newsletter, the additional copies are here at City Hall or can be accessed electronically through our website. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Ford.
Will all new hireees be drug tested?
Yeah, that already is a policy.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next, if we could get Linda Kunith from the Finance Department.
First three months have been busy, as, as usual, starting off with the budget. It was compiled through discussions with department heads and vendors, and reviewed with city commission at a work session for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, which begins July Public hearing is scheduled for that, is proposed for May, May seventh. There was a finalization of agreements with the bank and investment manager for newly-created retiree healthcare trust, and funds were transferred into the fund. The assessment notices were mailed March first. The city's longtime assessor retired, and the city hired a new assessing company called Assessing Administration Services, AAS, and they started April first. Property taxes were collected through February twenty-eighth. Any delinquent summer and winter property taxes were sent to the county treasurer's office. If you'd like to make a payment on a delinquent tax, you need to contact the county, Macomb County Treasurer's Office at five eight six four six nine five one nine zero. The past quarter, the city had an average of about twenty-four hundred utility bills per month. Had a hundred and seventy-two properties had a delinquent water bill, because there was a delay in December because of all the water main breaks. But a hundred and seventy-two were delinquent in payments and in broken arrangements, so they were shut off. To turn them back on, it generated five thousand nine hundred dollars in revenue, additional revenue to turn it back on. Four hundred and ninety-three parking stickers were sold last quarter, totaling over thirty-five thousand dollars. And the Park Mobile app continues to be very popular and is being widely used. That totaled over twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars in the last quarter. On the IT end, the city replaced six, six additional computers and several monitors. We only replace monitors as needed. The noon phone system and data connection upgrade for all city buildings is well underway. City buildings now have upgraded wiring. AT&amp;T has completed the installation of the fiber in the city buildings, and connection testing is underway this week. Next week, we're hoping to actually have some of the lines activated, so data will be a lot faster, and we'll get off the T1 lines between buildings as soon as next week. It'll probably be by the end of the month. And the phone system equipment is being purchased by a vendor, and they'll begin with staff training at the end of the month, and we're hoping that the system is operational in the coming month. And then, lastly, under purchasing, purchasing wrote, twenty bids were to place on mitten cable on the city website. Four insurance claims, three hundred purchase orders, twenty-one agenda items for commission, twenty-two service orders were also placed for building repair and maintenance, electrical door HVAC items. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, if we get Jeanette Bass from the Utilities Department.
Hi, I wanted to let you know that we've provided CPR training and first aid training for our staff. We tried to get almost, well, everyone there that we could. I think we missed maybe one or two people, but we've got everyone certified now in both water, wastewater and water and sewer maintenance. At the water filtration plant, we treated two hundred and forty-eight million gallons of water, provided fresh clean water for our citizens. We completed rebuilding for the manifold assemblies and airlines on the filter control tables, and we've ordered the parts to complete the last four, so we'll have that completely upgraded. The removal of redundant and expired material while organizing plant records, we've done that, which is nice to kind of tidy up things. We completed proposals for fiscal year 2019 budget and future plant improvements, which include the nineteen fifty-nine building roof, the ozone system, and an electrical system rehabilitation. These are not guaranteed, we're gonna do them, but we're gonna look at them very strongly. We are working with SEMCOG to develop a plan for the Huron Erie drinking water monitoring network, which includes other municipalities, excuse me, other municipalities on the waterway. The state has awarded three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for new equipment and the reactivation of the network. This was a project they started several years ago, and then there wasn't a good training program that went with it, nobody supported the equipment, and it kind of went by the wayside. So, they've resurrected it, and we are jumping in and joining that. In fact, we're probably gonna host a lot of the equipment. The water and sewer maintenance crew has repaired twenty-two water main breaks in the first quarter. Eighteen of those were in January and February. They also repaired one sewer line. The cleaning and televising of all the city's sanitary and combined sewers is approximately ninety-five percent complete. This was supposed to be done the end of December, but it's, we had a lot dirtier sewers than we thought. We responded to two hundred and forty-two customer service requests. On the wastewater treatment side, we've treated four hundred and forty-five million gallons of water. There's more water we treated than we produced. That's because we treat all the rainwater, too, and all those combined sewers. And we got about five inches of rain this first quarter. Got a lot of rain. We sent out the industrial pretreatment program billing, which is about ten thousand dollars worth of revenue. We submitted our completed annual industrial pretreatment program report to the MDEQ. We also submitted the annual storm water pollution prevention program report to the MDEQ. That's called the SWIPI. We performed corrective maintenance on the North Rose Pump Station and rebuilt the check valve and replaced the sump pump. We painted the hallway, lunchroom, and offices at the wastewater treatment plant building, something that hasn't been done in about twenty years, I understand. So, it looks really nice. We shipped the second biosolids dewatering centrifuge out for repair and reconditioning, and we should be getting that back within the next three, four weeks. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, if we could get Brian Tingley from Community Development.
Okay, in the first quarter of this year, there's been two hundred and twenty-seven building and other trade permits issued. Opened five hundred and two new code enforcement cases. There have been two hundred and forty-three rental inspection slash vacant property verifications, and one hundred and five rental units received their certificates of compliance. This quarter, department staff attended meetings, the DDA, Historical Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, the River Acres Neighborhood Association, and I also gave a speech at the March meeting of the Mount Clemens Alliance Club. We've worked with the Bainton Macomb, the Clinton River Watershed Council, the city manager's office on planning a riverfront cleanup scheduled this week. There'll be more about that in the city manager's report. We submitted the city's 2018 CDBG applications to Macomb County. We worked with AEW and the Public Services Department after preparing the bid packet for the Shady Side Park CDBG project, and bids for this project are due this week Wednesday. The kayak launch project at MacArthur Park has started, with pile driving taking place within the river. The weather, however, is still delaying the overall, overall project. Now, this quarter, the planning commission held two meetings. They approved a site plan and special land use for Stepping Stones Montessori to utilize the property as sixty-seven union. And they approved a site plan for a twenty-six hundred square foot addition at the Martha T. Berry Medical Facility for a new dining and conference room. And then, this project was approved in the fourth quarter of last year, but the first permits have been issued for the McLaren Macomb Hospital addition. And again, this is going to be a forty-four thousand square foot, six-story addition on the northwest portion of the site. It's going to be housing a graduate education center and a replacement emergency and trauma center on the first floor and lower level, with the upper floors being reserved for a future build-out. It's gonna be a multi-year project, so it's gonna keep, keep our inspectors pretty busy. And then, the last thing I wanted to just make everybody aware of is that McLaren Macomb Hospital, again, they've recently invested approximately one point one million dollars in the hospital to establish and build out an epilepsy monitoring unit. It's expected to serve about one thousand patients per year, and is going to serve as a hub for epilepsy care in the entire McLaren system. They're also adding five more technicians as part of this investment. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And next, we'll have Lisa Borges from the city clerk's office.
The city clerk's office is currently in the process of changing to new software for our qualified voter file, as mandated by the Michigan Bureau of Elections. We've been attending extensive training on this new program, which promises to provide greater accuracy and time-saving measures for voter registration and elections. We are preparing for the upcoming May eighth, 2018 special election. We're processing requests daily for absentee voter ballots and registering new voters. Close of registration to be eligible to vote in this election is Monday, May ninth. Oh, I'm sorry. It was last week, actually. After the May eighth special election, we will begin preparing for the August seventh primary election. The clerk's office has promptly processed numerous Freedom of Information Act requests for this quarter, as well as voter registrations. We have researched and will begin a new project for the preservation of the city commission minute books, which date back to the mid eighteen hundreds. So, we'd like to keep them for a lot longer time than what we have. The clerk's office and the city manager's office have been working diligently with the bicentennial committee on various events, most recently the city's bicentennial ceremony that was held in March. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. These positions are an excellent way to get back to the community. Vacancies remain on the following boards: Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Historic District Commission, Local Officers Compensation Commission, and Traffic Safety Committee.
Thank you.
During the last quarter, the Public Services Department prepared a budget for a city commission review and approval, responded to fifteen snow events through the months of January, February, and March. We recently cleaned and put away all of the winter snow removal and salting equipment, and hopefully it's not too early. Met with the beautification committee representative, and will be assisting in the planting of a columnar oak tree at Seminole School in observance of Arbor Day. We've begun the street sweeping program, and as we ramp that program up, depending on weather, we will be updating the areas that we will be working in on the city's Facebook page and website. We met with the city's engineering contractor and identified multiple locations of concrete and asphalt repairs for a patching program. We performed the monthly methane monitoring and DQ mandated dewatering event of the methane ventilation system. Issued one thousand three hundred and forty-one parking citations, generating approximately one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in meter revenue, which is up two point one percent from last quarter. Responded to fifty-eight animal control complaints. Submitted a quarterly report to MDOT for the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for reimbursement of trunk line maintenance, the majority of which was for snow removal. We restored and placed an eighteen seventies-era steam engine in Clemens Park. Worked with the sanitation contractor to begin the compost pickup. We made some necessary fence repairs and placed some signage at Memorial Field in preparation of the upcoming baseball season. Assisted with... Assisted with setup and cleanup of the ice carving show, and took down Christmas decor throughout the city, and held a meeting with MDOT regarding the Harrington paving project, which is scheduled for this fall.
Questions? Thank you. Is that it for...
That's all we have.
That's all you have? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roca?
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, this is the portion of the agenda, it's public participation. We invite you to come up and just adhere to our three-minute rule, and give us your name and residential address.
Hello, Maitzub is 221 CAS. I have a couple things, I hope they're good ideas. I heard that Mr. Wood talked about how we're gonna be paving Harrington. I hope that's part of Mr. Hackel's 50/50 initiative that has been pushed around the communities, and it made me come up with an idea where we can go 50/25/25 with Clinton Township, specifically on Joy Road. It's such a mess, and I feel like if we can split the cost with Clinton Township, maybe we can be able to afford that with two communities working on it, instead of just one. And, you know, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. Got so many things, I'm gonna have to whittle them down. Let me get the most important ones first. Then, meaning to say, a number of us in my area have noticed that since Laurel Emerson has become our inspector, things are really looking up. She's a by-the-booker. She gets on people, she stays on them till they do what they should. And she and Ms. Kuna has also come to the attention of local people who have been actually going to the library and looking at the budget, and commenting on how much of a better job we think is occurring now. And so I wanted to mention that we noticed Laurel and Linda. Number two, I want to put people's minds at rest. We do not need to have a city manager. We cannot afford a city manager that we would need. The way it's being done now is fine, it's a little bit hybrid for what the charter says, but I want to put everybody's minds at rest. The mayor is not manipulating Ms. Borges and Mr. Wood. I know both Mr. Wood and Ms. Borges, and they don't have jellyfish spines. They have a mind of their own, and of course, they're gonna confer with the mayor. She's been here since dirt. She knows everything. Why wouldn't they ask her for information? That doesn't mean she's telling them what to do or what to think, and if she did, I don't think they'd listen. You can watch 'em, but I don't think it's happening, so stop asking me about it. Number three, yeah, bring our deputy level back up, okay? Number four, you were struggling so with your expenses tonight in the pre-meeting. Why are you ignoring, like, doing your best to ignore city income tax? I've told you before, that county payroll is in the high 30 millions a year. A half a percent of that would help us. Stop talking about cutting the puppy dog's tail off in slices, just dock the sucker. I don't want to hear this, oh, 25% of that, and the county will help us with this, and the county will help us with that. Don't do that. Just get the money that you should get. I have checked with each and every county in the state, and I can tell you which ones have county seats like us, that have city income tax. And yeah, you got your failures, you got Detroit, you got Pontiac, you got Flint. I don't want to hear about those. Let's talk about the ones that are successful, that are so glad they did it, Albion, Kalamazoo, and so forth. I've got the whole list. I called and talked to all of them. So, the last excuse you cannot use is, "Oh, we can't afford to collect it." You don't have to. The state will now collect it for you. So you need to seriously look at the city income tax and get your income where it's due, which is primarily the county. Why are you letting them run all over you? You need to stop it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jean Dixon, and I reside at 114 Meadow, and I'm here on behalf of Shady Side Park. I do appreciate Brian Tinsley coming to our meeting, and he did say that some things are out for bid. But I do want you to make sure that you consider Shady Side when the funds are gonna be spent. Shady Side, the playscape, really needs some help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Administrative response to issues, we have none. Approval of minutes from previous meetings, I need a motion.
Motion to approve the work session of April 2 and the commission meeting of April 2, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Roca?
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, 9A, general business, 9A. Public hearing for the allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2018. Need a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion, go ahead. Motion to open the public hearing for the allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2018.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Okay, this... Go ahead, I'm just reading.
It is expected that the City of Mount Clemens will receive an allocation of $59,254 in CDBG funding for the 2018 fiscal year. The purpose of this agenda item is to elicit public input from residents and nonprofit organizations on how these dollars should be spent within the city.
This is a public hearing. You may come forth and address this. Just again, give us your name and address, and three minutes. Now's your time.
Here you go again. They tell me I need to speak on behalf of Shady Side again. Jean Dixon, 114 Meadow. The bids are in, I know, just want to make sure that you guys keep that at the front of your mind, Shady Side. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got lots of redoers. Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. Whatever you do, I don't know what kind of pleas you've had, P-L-E-A-S, from nonprofits and stuff, but keep the money in the city. You know, charity begins at home, and we need it. There's lots of places we can put that money. For instance, if you know where else, if you knew it... Again, we need to get our deputies back up. I was kinda like disturbed to hear Sarah mention that you're establishing an eligibility list for fireless people, that we have a fireless department. We better not be hiring fireless people when we don't have the deputies up to snuff. I don't pay... I've got the statistics on the fireless people. 2.6% of their runs last year were for anything to do with fires and explosions. I pay tax dollars for my house and worried about house fire. I don't worry about all the scraping people off the street and Narcan and all this other stuff. They got MidStar. If you need medical attention, call MidStar. I don't believe tax dollars or this kind of money should be spent on people's personal medical expense. Call MidStar. I'm not your mama.
Thank you.
Maitzub is 221 CAS. I would like to second the ladies from Meadow's motion about the idea of putting some of this, at least some of this, into Shady Side Park. It's so dilapidated. I remember talking to a gentleman last year when I did a cleanup. He went by himself and painted the basketball court with his own paint, his own money, because he talked to the city, and the city said they didn't have the money to. So, if there's some money, you know, maybe we could paint that. And I heard that the skate park over downtown is finally being removed, so maybe we could talk to the city of Detroit and get that skate park moved up there for free, so, you know, that might save some money. But Shady Side Park, I really like our idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I know, as we're talking about Shady Side and different places, as you come around the bend from Shady Side, you know, we have the park area that extends it to the neighborhood, and it goes to about where Lindsey is on that riverside. If you look there now, all these trees and things are just broken down, big trees. And I was just wondering if we could have a couple, $2,000 or $3,000, to help get those trees and things out of there. You know, we tried doing that last year, and I commend some of our commissioners and things for coming out and helping. But right now, you can see the need that's there. And the reason I say that is a safety factor. And I know you wonder, how can that be a safety factor? Because the police had to be called, because people were going down in there and different things. But there was a man that was pulling on some kids going down in there, and the kid was screaming. And the police were called, and he was arrested, and we don't know what else happened with that event. But if you've ever been along Canal Road, you know, if you drove along Canal, you used to could see the river. Well, guess what? You can't see the river anymore, because all those trees keep eroding forward, and that's what's happening at Shady Side. They keep coming forward. Eventually, they'll be, you know, maybe not in my time, but they'll be near the street, and we need to cut some of that stuff back in order to create a more safety environment, because whether you know it or not, kids from outside our neighborhood that don't look like us come and use that area of the park and stuff as their drinking parties and things like that, and we have to call the police. And so, if we can use a couple, $2,000 or $3,000, where we can get people to come in, even some of these landscaping companies with trucks and things like that, that where we can cut, or people that have equipment. The county stated, you know, the city said they would work with us with grinding up some stuff, but hopefully we can get the county or some private ventures to do that also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing for allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2018.
Second. Roca?
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, 9B, approve the purchase and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Mensah?
Yeah, I just would like an explanation on the quantity on the high-tech quote. That just kinda didn't make sense to me. It says quantity 48, tech care, remote monitoring, you know, quantity 390. Is this number of hours, number of service events?
No, it's divided by... If you have it per month is worth, if you just divide it by six months, so it'd be It's the number of units that we have, the number of users that we have. We have approximately 65 users per month for six months. We have eight servers that they're monitoring over a six-month period, and then there's one person staffing it, and that's why it's a separate amount. I don't care for the way they show that out either, but it's over a period of time. They're showing it all together, and they bill it out monthly.
So you get a report from them every month that tells me, says what they did?
Mm-hmm. Okay. As well as the status of our servers, and computers, and age, and performance, backup success, they give us a monthly, as well as if there was an issue, they do contact us when it happens, letting us know there's an issue with the server, if someone's coming out, or they did this or that. Every single ticket that we put in, we get a response back on what the results were. But we get a monthly report.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, Roca, please.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Consent agenda, need a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support. Second. Roca, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
City Manager's Report.
A joint work session of the City Commission and Downtown Development Authority is scheduled for Monday, April 23, at 6:00 PM. The Let's Move Festival of Races is coming to Mount Clemens on Saturday, April 28, 2018, at 8:00 AM. For more information or to register for the race, please visit www.letsmovefestivalofraces.com. A special bicentennial edition of the Clementine's Newsletter will be delivered to residents with the Journal Newspaper this month. This edition will contain information about the city's bicentennial and all events being held throughout the year. In celebration of the city's bicentennial, the religious community has scheduled a Houses of Worship tour on Saturday, May 5, 2018. Various activities will be offered by the 11 churches participating in the tour from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, including a concert at Christian Lighthouse Church at 4:30 PM. Please come and appreciate the history of some of the oldest churches in the city. For more information, please visit the city's website at www.cityofmountclemens.com. And the farmer's market on North River Road will open for the season on Saturday, May 5. Thereafter, the market will be open every Friday and Saturday from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. For more information, please contact (586) 493-7600. And in partnership with Advancing McComb, the Clinton River Watershed Council, and DTE Energy, volunteers will be cleaning up the banks of the Clinton River on Friday, April 20, from MacArthur Park to Shady Side Park. That's all I have.
Okay, are there any questions?
What time is that?
The cleanup?
The cleanup?
I think it's nine, it starts at 9:00.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, have a quick little story here. And the current issue of Michigan Gardener is a story about what many consider our greatest asset here in Mount Clemens, and that's our nice, older homes and our tree-shaded neighborhoods. And it's a story about Mr. Bob Laberty's house, and it gives a background of the property, and it's just a very nice positive spin on the city. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Krapp?
I wanted to thank those who came out to my coffee talk last week on Tuesday. It was a... We had a nice turnout, and it's always nice to sit down with residents and talk about their concerns for Mount Clemens and what's happening in the city. Again, this Saturday, I will be hosting another coffee talk on John's Family Grill, 9:30 AM, so come and join us. And I look forward to the upcoming bicentennial celebration on the 5th, Cinco de Mayo. So have some worship celebration, and then go enjoy some tacos. That's all I have.
Commissioner Bunton?
Yes, I always like to give you some ideas about what Google has to say about our month. So, this is, as has been spoken before, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's also Alcohol Awareness Month, presented by the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependency, Inc. Also Autism Awareness Month for this month of April. Some of the special days in April. Take Your Daughter to Work Day is April 26. That's a good one, because our young ladies need to know that there are opportunities out there for them in the workplace, and they need to get an idea of what it's like to actually work in some of these places of work. April 28 is Kiss Your Mate Day, and this is designed for guys to show affection for their significant woman, the significant woman in their lives. So, guys, take note of that, that's April 28. And April 30 is National Honesty Day. It's amazing that we should have a day that says we should all be honest on that particular day, but we should probably be honest on all of the days. On April 10, the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families presented Mount Clemens High School student Ashley Nelson to prosecuting attorney Eric Smith's office as an award-winning student for her participation with the coalition and her many other school activities. As a matter of fact, she's now working with the production crew back in the back that is filming this thing.
Stand up, Ashley, so we can all see ya. Get the camera.
Obviously, we're very proud of her, and actually, she's my neighbor. And that didn't have anything to do with this decision either, by the way. On April 20, the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families will host its sixth Real Talk Dialogue Day, in which adults from the community and students in the high school interact in small-group dialogue. This is an opportunity for youth and adults to gain a greater respect and appreciation for... This is an opportunity for youth and adults to gain a greater respect and appreciation for each other. If you would like, if you'd like to be involved with this, if you're interested in participating in this event, you may contact Ryan Rablin, the event coordinator at CARE of Southeast Michigan, phone number (586) 218-5283, for further information. I also, if some in the audience right now are interested in attending it, I have a couple of forms that you can take with you and find out what it's all about and participate if you would like. April 28th, the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families, in conjunction with the National Drug Enforcement Administration, will be hosting its semi-annual Drug Takeback Day this April 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at Wilson School Gym, located at 58 South Wilson. That's kind of on the corner of Church and Wilson. We encourage you to bring your unused, unwanted, expired prescription drugs to be properly disposed of by the DEA. This will prevent those drugs from getting into the wrong hands or into the ecosystem by flushing them down our, into our toilets through our water supply system or burying them in the ground and polluting our soil. So, if you're interested, you have anybody, in fact, you can pass this on to any neighbor or anybody else. Bring your drugs, unused, expired, or unwanted drugs to our take back. Like to thank Jeff Woods and the DPW for removing the tree that was blocking North Broadway this Sunday. It seemed to create quite a disturbance for the people going to church down that street, but you took care of it right away, and everybody was happy. They were very pleased with your work. Also, very pleased with the department reports. I think the department's heads have done an awesome job with giving us very good, detailed information about what's going on in the city. I guess with that, we'll go to Commissioner Wisdom. One advantage of talking to yourself is that you know that at least somebody is listening. And that's by Franklin P. Jones. And with that, we'll say good night.
What you missed today is Wear Your Pyjamas to Work Day.
Why didn't you all do that?
Somebody tell us.
Commissioner, we'll go to Commissioner Fournier.
I just want to remind everyone that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and our local organization that supports abused women, Turning Point, is having an assembly on April 24th from 4:00 to 5:00 PM at the Clock Tower in downtown Mount Clemens. And I hope everyone will be there to support the organization. They do a lot of very good work in our community. They also have some other events going on, and you can go out to their website and see what else is planned for the month of April. And the only other thing I really had was, I want to, I do support getting Shady Side Park cleaned up, fixed up, and those dead trees that are in there need to come out. It is just, they're an eyesore, and they're a hazard. So we need to work and figure out a way to do that. That, have a nice week. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
I'd like to remind everybody that River Acres is having a meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Mount Clemens Library to, I think the topic will be Shady Side. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Woods for a fine job he's done on Give the Michigan a Pheasant, of cutting down trees and cleaning up the mess. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
So if we do a Shady Side cleanup this year, can we not do it when the poison ivy is active? Because last time, it was terrible. So the McComb County Association of School Administrators and the McComb County Association of Curriculum Administrators are holding their annual recognition ceremony on Thursday, April 19th. This week, they will recognize teachers Lisa Conte from the King Academy and Ricardia Lewis from the Mount Clemens High School. Congratulations to these two teachers for proving that good things are continuing to happen in our schools. On March 28th, the Mount Clemens Optimist Club did hold its essay and oratorical contest at the high school. We handed out eighteen hundred dollars in scholarship money for first, second, and third place prizes. The topic this year was "What Respect Means to Me", and I'll thank Commissioner Fournier for being a judge at that. It was a great event. Sharon Guyer, and as a little history here, Sharon Guyer was a Mount Clemens City Commissioner from 1977 to 1984, and she was the mayor pro tem from 1979 to 1984. And then she went on to be a county commissioner and a state representative. But Sharon is now working with the Area Agency on Aging 1B, and they're giving a Creating Competent Caregivers Organization meeting for people who are caring for those who have dementia or memory loss. They're going to, you know, teach you and work with you on things like how to improve your caregiver skills, how do you make it so that it isn't overwhelming for you when you're caring for somebody with dementia or memory loss, what resources are available for that, and the dementia and the effects that it has on the brain. That'll be at the Verkullen Building, off Dunham Road, behind the jail there, in Assembly Room B. And starts Thursday, the 24th, and it goes through 529. And it's from 1:30 to 3:30. And again, that's sponsored by the Area Agency on Aging 1B. And I went to this, a little, it was called a 1918 Tea, and it was on women's suffragette movement. And as we're talking about our bicentennial, this year is the 100th year that women have had the right to vote. It happened in 1918. So when we celebrate our bicentennial, we got to include that. And that's what I have tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think I have anything to add. Everybody, oh, bracelets, I guess I could do a little commercial. We have these great bracelets for sale, the Bicentennial Committee. We have three of them, and there are little charms on here. They have, one of them has a picture of the old courthouse, and another one is the Emerald Theater, and another one has like an old postcard with a bathtub. So they are for sale, twenty dollars apiece. You can get them here at City Hall. And the proceeds will go back to the Bicentennial Committee to help us put on all these great events that you're going to see in the special edition of the Clementine, which will be coming out the first part of this month, correct? Didn't you say this month, or? Yeah, thank you. So please take a look at that. There's a lot of events coming up, and there are some free events coming up too, so. And we can always use help, as always, when I say, you know, when it's time for the parade, I need volunteers. We can use help throughout the year, so. Contact City Hall if you're interested, and thank you very much. And we also have a book, which I don't have in front of me, which I should have. We'll do that next time, a commercial on the book. History that Debbie Larson wrote. It's very interesting. She and I went to the Rotary Club last week. She presented that, and I presented the calendar of events and tried to sell the bracelet, so. If you have any questions, contact us. Thank you so much. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Support. All those favor I?
Aye.
Opposed?